All right, I'll call to order the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for February 19th, 2018, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, and I'll ask our chapel, Reverend Will Mack, to come forward and give us our application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Almighty, everlasting God, we come together this evening thankful for the opportunity to conduct business on behalf of those who are served. Thank you for this board, for these men and their willingness to serve, and all who make possible this meeting and the business of this county. But, Lord, we gather here with hearts that are grieving for those who have lost loved ones, certainly in the recent tragedy that is the shooting in Florida, but also amidst the pandemic of premature deaths generally in our nation and in our county. Please grant, oh God, that we may have safety and protection at our schools and all places where our children are, and, Lord, wherever people are gathered, would you please be a shield? And please give us, Lord, the good sense to be vigilant and watchful, that we may be the means of protecting those who are most vulnerable. All of this we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Nice to see everybody here on President's Day. We've got public comment session first, got a couple of people signed up, and then thereafter, if anyone else wants to speak, they may do so. We usually try to stick to around three minutes with your time speaking. First person is Rick Strubeck.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Rick Strubeck. I live at 26 Canouga Place in Waynesville. I am the president of the Haywood County Veterans Council, and I come before you today to ask if you would consider using the armory that has been acquired by the county, if we can have that used as a VA Vet Center. There are six vet centers in the state of North Carolina, and the nearest one to this part of North Carolina is in Charlotte. They have a... The Vet Center also has a mobile Vet Center that will be visiting the American Legion in Waynesville on Thursday, if you want to come down and see what they're all about. But this... The Vet Program is to promote access to care by helping veteran service members and their families to overcome the barriers that impede them, and they can maintain regularly and schedule non-traditional hours such as evenings and weekends to ensure that they have access to these services. They're able to create veteran-to-veteran connections and help with the adjustment of back into civilian life after being discharged from the military. These Vet Centers offer... They're community-based, and they offer counseling to the veterans and their families. And we're in dire need of counseling for our young veterans that are returning home now, who face a high suicide rate because of their readjustment problems. The Vet Center can help these veterans and their families to readjust back into society. And it really... We really have a chance here in Haywood County to bring a Vet Center to this area that can service western North Carolina. As a member of the Haywood County Veterans Council, I've been to the Veteran Stand Down, which is... It's made up of seven counties in western North Carolina, and I'm sure that this Vet Center would be a big help to all the veterans throughout those seven counties. So I'm asking you if you would please consider turning the armory, the armory that was recently acquired, over to a Vet Center to help the 7,000 veterans in Haywood County, plus all the veterans in the surrounding counties in western North Carolina. We need to be represented out here in the West. Like I said, the six Vet Centers in North Carolina, the closest one is Charlotte, there's 300 Vet Centers throughout the nation, and they're doing a lot of good. I'm a combat veteran from Vietnam. If they had some kind of Vet Centers like this when me and my buddies returned, I'm sure we'd have a lot more Vietnam veterans walking among us. But it's a great thing for veterans, and it could definitely help Haywood County. Thank you.
All right, we'll let you go next.
Okay. Hi, my name is Lewis Oats. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to talk about the possibilities or opportunity to consider the armory as a Vet Center in western North Carolina. If you don't know what a Vet Center is, then I'm going to explain to you. We are the people in the VA who welcome the war veterans home and honor, by honoring quality readjustment counseling and care in that manner. Vet Centers understand and appreciate veterans of war experience while assisting them and their families and members toward a successful post-war adjustment. Okay? I lost my paper. Okay, life isn't always easy after deployment, and there, that's where Vet Centers can help. Vet Centers across the country provide a broad range of counseling, outreach, and referral services to combat veterans and their families. Veterans guides, Vet Centers guide veterans and their families through major adjustments in lifestyles that occur to veterans when they return from combat. Service for the veterans may include individual group counseling, such as post-traumatic disorder like what I have, and alcohol, drug assessment, and suicide prevention referrals. Vet Center program is established by Congress in 1979 in recognition of a significant number of veteran-era vets, Vietnam-era vets, were still experiencing readjustment problems. Veteran Centers were, are community-based, and part of the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. In April 1991, in response to the Persian Gulf War, Congress extended the eligibility to veterans who served during their periods in armed hostilities in the Vietnam era. Those other periods are identified as Lebanon, Grenada, Panama, Persian Gulf, Korean Combat Vets. The goal to the Vet Center program is to provide a broad range of counseling, outreach, referral service to eligible veterans in order to help make them a satisfied post-war readjustment to civilian life. On April 1, 2003, Secretary of Veterans Affairs extended the eligibility of veterans, eligibility was extended to the veterans of Operation Iraqi Freedom, subsequent operations with the Global War on Terrorism. The family members and veterans listed above are eligible center service as well. On August 5, 2003, the VA Secretary Anthony D. Papal authorized the veteran centers to furnish bereavement counseling services and surviving, to surviving parents and spouses, children and siblings. The service members who died of a cause while they were on active duty include, to include federal active reserve and National Guard personnel. We would like, we would like for you to consider the Clyde Armory as a possible location to the Vet Center. We have nothing like this in western North Carolina. We have the number-one VA hospital in the country, but no Vet Center. We totally, we, the Vet Center is totally different and is in a community setting. We are here tonight to where, to raise awareness of the Vet Center. As you see me, as you see me tonight, you have a great interest, we have a great interest in support, exploring the possibilities of opening a Vet Center in Haywood County. Haywood County is the central location of all the counties. There's over 20,000 vets in Haywood County. Haywood County has the largest population of veterans, and by being the center, all the main thoroughfares come through here. So that means growth and pop, growth and brings jobs, you know, to this area, brings professional jobs to this area. And when the veterans come here, they're going to spend money. They're going to buy cars, they're going to piss the tape with the shopkeepers, they're going to, they're going to stay in hotels because their lengthy stays sometimes going to take two or three days for them to get processed away, or their counseling. So they're going to spend here in Haywood County, and then on top of that, by us being the number, by the VA being the number-one VA in America, I don't see why we can't build a number-one Vet Center in America and be a role model for the nation. We are here tonight to, you see the support that we have of the people. I ask that when y'all convene for your March Docket and counseling, that y'all consider us, and I can be able to have you a packet. I talked to Navy Federal, Navy Federal, the world's largest credit union, and they're talking about, they've been looking at this area for years, and they said they want to put a branch in here. So that brings, that brings growth. And I also talked to the directors of the VA, they're interested in it, but they want to put that, they, they're talking about putting it in Bunkham County. And I said, hey, why not put it here in Haywood County? Because if you go over to the VA, the VA sees something like 50,000 people a month. It's like going to Little New York. People are parking outside the gate. We're going to have the convenience of people coming from Murphy, Andrews, from Avery County, Graham County, Bryson City, that can all convene here and get their services done. Thank you, sir, and I appreciate you hearing me out.
Thank you. Could we get your name again?
Lewis Oats.
Lewis.
L-E-W-I-S-O-A-T-S.
Okay, Lewis Oats. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Oats. Okay, next, Monroe Miller.
I have been making public record requests regarding the David Francis Dirt Spreading Project, otherwise known as the Jonathan Creek Soil Reclamation Project, ever since you approved AVCON for this project. Joel Mashburn, our interim county manager, is acting as a gatekeeper for disseminating all the information I have been requesting, rather than having the custodians of these records respond. I have been met with resistance and downright obstruction in obtaining direct records. I'm asking today that you Commissioners intervene and instruct the actual custodians of public records to respond directly to my repeated request, some dating back to early January. The cast of characters here involves Scott Burwell, Christie Brown, and Mark Cathay from McGill Associates. McGill Associates are a vendor, and I cannot request any information from a vendor. David Francis, Chris Boyd, Julie Davis, and Chip Killian are all county employees and direct custodians of county records. These people have never once responded directly to my series of record requests. These people are channeling responses through Joel Mashburn. Two employees that are to be commended for responding directly are Donna Corpenning and Kathy McClure, and I appreciate their responses. I am asking publicly at this commission meeting for the following three items. One, I'd like the full and complete MOU signed by Sarah McCoy of AVCON dated December 13th, 2017. Number two, I want the names of the people. The bids were sent to by Christie Brown of McGill in his correspondence with the bidders. I want the company names and the contact information printed out from the county's vendor inquiry system. Thirdly, I would like to inspect the actual drawings that Steve Miller used to place the entrance and the 2,000 feet of silt fence on the work site. All of you Commissioners are already fully aware of my repeated request for public information, as all of you are copied on the emails I have been sending to Joel Mashburn and the custodians of this public information. I appreciate your allowing time for me to express my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak? And then, I know we had Rick and Lewis speak on behalf of the veterans, but I also knew there were some other veterans that here, that were here making that request. If you could just stand up, I know you're not, you're not coming forward to speak, but if there's anybody else in here in support of that, if you could just please stand, if you're here for that reason. Okay. I just want to make sure you're recognized. I know you weren't going to speak, but, okay. Thank you. And for you veterans, we appreciate your service. All right, anyone else want to make a public comment? Okay, next we'll move to constituent concerns.
I've had several people talk to me about the changes in the hunting schedule or whatever for the bear season and deer season throughout North Carolina, and I've been talking with county manager about this, and appears that nobody wants this changed, or at least the people that I've been talking to or have come to me, and I'm not sure that, might be something, you know, they've asked our opinion on it, but Joel and I are working on it, so I guess I'll keep you posted on it, okay?
Kirk, I just wanted to comment, we were invited, and I think four of us had gone to the Haywood Nursing and Rehabilitation Center, which was formerly the Bryan Center, and I just wanted to let the public know that we'd been to that facility and it's, they're really improving the facility, and I was really impressed with what they've got going on there now, and how that they've really, that facility is really doing, doing a good job serving our community. So we went to that, and then also we were invited to the Lake Hills Church up in Barber's Orchard, and they have got a new sanctuary, and we went to that, and it's a beautiful sanctuary, and I encourage anybody to attend. We had a good time at the service yesterday, and I want to thank them, those groups for inviting us.
Bill?
I don't have any.
Brandon?
I do not. I had one, one situation. I talked to Mr. Mashburn, and we're taking care of that.
Okay. As far as the armory goes, you know, that's something that, right now, that we just, we have just been made aware of, that we're going to be able to receive, I mean, it's something we thought we would be able to receive for the last few months. And there are a couple of entities that are vying for that, making requests for that, and so at this point in time, we're probably going to take our time to analyze those and see what the best use of that facility is. And of course, I invite additional information about these other Vet Centers for you to supply to the county manager, that information, and we'll certainly consider that as well. And Mr. Miller, as far as your public record requests, we have received emails, we get copied on your emails. We're made aware of the information that's provided to you, and I know that it is provided, and also I know that we've got some records about all the requests that you have made recently, and the time that it takes, and the time that it takes the employees of this county to respond to you, and the cost that it costs the citizens of this county to respond to you. And I'm going to ask David Francis, I think he's got some information about that. But you'll get your documents if you request them properly. Come on up, yeah. You will get your documents. But that's what you'll get, is the documents you request, and you request the right way. But you're not going to get them when you request them by names they don't go by, or by projects they don't go by. And you'll get what we have, because we make everything public and we're open to the public. I've been doing this for 16 years, and everything we've provided is open to the public. And, you know, the only thing that I've seen from you is you're just trying to find something wrong, and that's what you continuously do. And unfortunately, what's happening now is it involves the time, so much time, for our county employees to respond and try to do it right, to make sure that you get the information that you need. Go ahead and tell us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since the beginning of this year, we, the county, has received over 60 emails from Mr. Miller alone. We're at day 50 in the calendar year. The documents that he requests, he has been provided all the documents that he's requested. Candy, Mr. Mashburn and I got everything he wanted together and ready, and he came one morning, sat here for three and a half hours while he reviewed these documents, and we had to print all this out. We had an electronic format, but he wanted to inspect it, and we, Mr. Mashburn did a nice job, laid it all out. Mr. Mashburn has been over backwards, been over backwards for Mr. Miller, and so Mr. Miller in turns goes back and makes fun of Mr. Mashburn, because he likes to poke fun at people and belittle them behind the computer that he can, you know, because he's a bigger man behind that computer than he is any other place. But he has belittled everybody, almost everybody in this room, one time or another. He's a shameful human being to deal with. You know, he's gone around, and he's basically accused me of doing something wrong, and I assure you, I would never do anything wrong. He's glossed over the fact that when we started this process, we worked to negotiate the contract down, saved the county $90,000 when we started the project. Glosses over those things, but accuses me of going around and doing something nefarious. And, sir, you're wrong. You're very wrong. And so it's become, you know, every day, there's something to deal with. You know, he doesn't understand government, and he certainly doesn't understand business. And we've been very patient and very kind to him. Like I said, Mr. Mashburn's been over backwards to help him out. As I said, he has everything. Just because he thinks that there's something that should be there, and he thinks that we're concealing that, the MOU that he just asked for, he wanted a MO, he wanted a cover sheet for a MOU, we don't have a cover sheet for the MOU. It's not there. If we had it, he would have inspected it the day he was here. You know, so one thing leads to, you know, six other questions. And by the statute, and Mr. Killian and Mr. Mashburn can certainly address that farther that, we provide documents. We don't have to answer every little question that comes across. So this has become just a big paper chase for Mr. Miller. I guess he gets excited off that, you know, is obsessed as he is with me, I should have got a Valentine's from him last week. But this, this has become, you know, we're inundated with this, this record all the time, and I don't think the public knows. We spent, getting everything, we estimated, we spent over $700 of county's time, with our staff time, getting ready for all this. Countless hours. I can go back and put all the hours together. There's not in my tenure, if I'd spent any more time with one individual out of 20 years, getting documents together, not just this time, but any other time. So I think the public should know that we have been over backwards, and I said, Mr. Mashburn's done a great job of trying to help him out, help him understand things. He just doesn't understand stuff, is all it comes down to. Any questions, board?
Chip?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, I'm not the custodian of any records. One of the problems we've had here is that he's asking for information, he wants explanations, he wants to discuss things. He's not, many times, not asking for documents, and all the statute requires and speaks to is the production and viewing of documents, and we've made every effort to provide the documents that he's asked for.
Okay, anything else, Commissioners? Mr. Miller, we'll continue to provide you with the documents, just as we would provide anyone here, anyone in this county with documents, but that's all we're going to do, what the law requires us to do.
Mr. Chairman, I probably misspoke. Really, I should have said records instead of documents. I guess they're one and the same, but the statute talks about records, not information.
All right, next we'll move to administrative agency reports. We got the Vaya Health Physical Monitoring Report for December 31st, 2017, Julie Davis.
Good evening. Vaya Health sends me on a quarterly basis their financial reports for me to report to you. I have the December 31st, 2017, report, and you have them in your packet. I will just mention their revenues through December were $207,990,441. Their expenditures through December, $207,408,465, for a net income of $581,976.
Okay, Commissioners, have any questions to Julie about that report?
This is a follow-up to, she was here last meeting and kind of give us an update on what was going on in the mental health.
Yes, yes, it's the exact same thing, it sure is.
So if people don't know what that's about.
All right, thank you, Julie. Next, do we have any adjustment to the agenda? All right, if not, we'll move to the consent agenda. First, we've got request approval of February 5th, 2018, regular meeting minutes. Anybody have any changes, corrections, deletions to those? All right, if not, we'll move to the request approval of 2018 Refunds, Releases, Amendments, and Discoveries. Greg West, Assistant Tax Assessor, with us this evening. Greg?
Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I'm here to request approval of the January 2018 Refunds, Releases, Amendments, and Discoveries. Pretty much about the smallest report we've had in several months, business as usual.
Commissioners, have any questions to Greg? All right, thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Next, we've got request approval of January 2018 Tax Collections. Mike Matthews, tax collector.
Good evening, Commissioners. Our current collections as of January 31st are 91.63, so 0.68% higher than this time last year, and our delinquent balance is at $4,395,821.65.
Okay, Commissioners, have any questions of Mike? All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, we have a request approval of budget amendment from Julie Davis for capital project fund for the public schools. This is the architect fee for the Bethel Middle School Gymnasium. I believe we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, or maybe a month ago.
We did, we brought this application for the lottery proceeds back in January, and you approved it, the school board approved it, and then it was sent to DPI, the Department of Public Instruction, and now that DPI has approved a portion of it, they've approved the planning and architect fees, design fees, and have sent us notice of that. They haven't yet approved the rest of it, but that usually comes a little bit later. So what I'm doing now is I'm doing a budget amendment for the $20,000 for the design fees, so that they can get started, and I'll be bringing you the balance of it. There's $380,000 that both this board and the school board approved to send to DPI for the lottery proceeds, and this is going to be paid for, of course, with lottery proceeds.
All right, Commissioners, have any questions about this? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda after presenting.
So we're...
Second, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and that passes unanimously. All right, next we'll move to old business. We've got a request approval for economic grant incentives on investment of $17,584,907 by Evergreen Packaging as part of the Jobs, Maintenance, and Capital Development Agreement. David Francis is here with us.
Thank you, Commissioners. At the last meeting, we had a public hearing concerning the JMAC grant. Evergreen, the Department of Commerce, and Haywood County agreed to certain... Evergreen, the Department of Commerce, and Haywood County agreed to certain grants and incentives for the Evergreen to invest in new Bowler Mac bowlers down there at the Canton facility, not the Waynesville facility. Somebody asked me that question the other day, so I didn't, was not clear enough that it is at the Canton facility. And so I urge the Commissioners for approval of the grant back to Evergreen for the next six years.
All right. Commissioners, we've dealt with this, discussed it last time. And have any questions of David regarding this incentive? You got any questions? All right. Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve the economic grant incentive for the investment of seventeen million, five eighty-four, nine oh seven, that Evergreen Packaging has made as part of the jobs, maintenance, and capital development agreement.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you, David.
Sure.
And I want to thank Evergreen Packaging and all their employees for the work that they do, and also providing that economic development to this county. It's the highest employer of the county.
At the, in the meeting in the near future, I've asked Evergreen to come and explain the operations with, you know, dealing with an, as I mentioned, that the last time, they've diversified their operations. They're in coffee cups, ice cream containers now, not just the cartons that they had been for so long. So I think it'd be interesting to hear what all they've done for the last few years.
Okay.
Chairman, I remember going over to Knoxville in nineteen eighty-five. We thought we had lost the mill. And I think a lot of you, probably Vicki, made that trip. So we've come a long ways to almost losing the mill to the mill invested in products that'll be long-lasting. I like the coffee cups and juice cups and this type of thing. We're happy the mill is still there.
Just with this investment and this modernization of the plant, and then, you know, the way this thing was structured for them in order to be eligible for the JMAC, and to be eligible, you know, for upgrades for the gas lines and all assures that they're going to be there for a while.
As I mentioned the other time, you know, this was seventeen million for the gasification, which they still had some more work to do, which will be coming back for that additional work, you know, about this time next year, for, you know, for the incentives, still part of the same agreement. But since it was in two different years, we'll need to come back. But they also invested another eleven point three million dollars aside to this as well, too. So they're still investing in Haywood County.
That's right. And this refund is on new money, on new investment.
Correct.
And, you know, even though we are refunding back some of the revenue that we received from them, it's new money that we wouldn't have had if they hadn't have done this. And then we're still, you know, we're only giving back maybe half of it or so.
That's correct. It is, so that the seventeen point six million ended up being about a hundred and two thousand dollars in taxes. So we'll be refunding back fifty-one thousand of that.
Right.
So it was a good work around to help them. You know, the state of North Carolina did a great job stepping in with the JMAC grant as well. So it was, you know, collaborative effort between the state, the county, and Evergreen. Worked out well.
Definitely win-win.
Yeah, yeah. You know, it was like I said earlier, it's win, you know, win for jobs, win for the environment. When you get those kind of, you know, those kind of wins, it's a big win.
I actually went with Bill. He probably don't remember this, but I was a small kid at the time, so probably about fifteen years old. I remember making that trip as well.
Well, and then that coliseum down there was full of people.
It was. And also, I knew at the time, you know, I was at Pisgah, I knew if we lost the mill, a three-A school was going to be a one-A school real quick. So it was important, very important, to keep your jobs, and the kids, and the county.
All right. Next, we'll move to new business. We've got a request approval of a resolution to encourage Congress to create a reliable, predictable stream of resources to address deferred maintenance needs in America's national park system.
This was an interesting, you know, thing to learn about, was about the deferred maintenance in our national parks. A gentleman from Washington D.C. came and sat down with Mr. Mashburn earlier this year and explained the program and the needs that our national parks are going through. And it was kind of staggering when you start seeing the numbers and everything that our national parks, you know, the deferred maintenance is the way that the National Park Services describe the maintenance that's not been done after a year. So they, the national parks, you know, have a, you can find this on their website, the deferred maintenance, and they log all the parts by state, and about the deferred maintenance there that it's needed to do this project. So each year, as I said, the national projects, the national parks completed deferred maintenance logged by the state and park. There's currently over eleven point three billion dollars in deferred maintenance for our national parks with seventy-five thousand assets. Congress is currently considering Senate seven fifty-one, the National Park Service Act of two thousand and seventeen. Haywood County, as you all know, is a gateway, a unique gateway, for the Great Smoky Mountain National Park and the Blue Ridge Parkway. The Great Smoky Mountain Park and Blue Ridge are very important to the economic viability of our county. You know, it's because, you know, people come to Haywood, I hear this question a lot, you know, how do I get to the Smoky Mountain? How do I get to Blue Ridge? And so Lynn Collins and I were discussing this as well, too, about how important having, you know, this, you know, having Haywood County as being a, almost a central jump-off for folks and tourists to be able to go to either park they see. So it's been very important having the parks in their area. So just to give you rough numbers about what the national parks mean here to North Carolina or region or state, the Great Smoky Mountain National Park has almost a billion dollars in spending here, just with the Great Smoky Mountain Park. They have nearly fifteen thousand jobs are related to the Great Smoky National Park alone. Blue Ridge Parkway has roughly about another billion dollars in travel visitor spending, and another fifteen, sixteen thousand jobs that are related to the Blue Ridge Parkway as well, too. So, you know, these parks, Great Smoky, some in North Carolina, some in Tennessee. So they went through this and did the research about what is in North Carolina. So there's sixty-seven million dollars of deferred maintenance for the Great Smoky Mountain National Park. And most of these are roads, updates of roads, updates of view sheds. And there's nearly two hundred and sixty-one million dollars in the North Carolina section alone of the Blue Ridge Parkway. So there's a significant number of deferred maintenance in there. So these are our national treasures, our historic, you know, that tells, you know, about our life and our country. So this is very important, you know, not for Haywood County, but for the state of North Carolina and for our nation. And so that's why I bring forth to you this resolution encouraging Congress to find, you know, a steady stream to fund the national parks and bring this deferred maintenance current as we can. I'll be glad to go up, read the resolution if you'd like, or, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to read it, however you want to do it. But there are several cities and towns across North Carolina, along with counties. Town of Waynesville adopted it, Jackson County's adopted this. And so slowly moving across the state with the adoption of this resolution encouraging Congress to find a steady stream. One of the steady streams is that the country's recently signed a gas rights bill that would help, that could move some of those funds and fund the park system that way. So that's one of the things that they are suggesting to do with that as well, too. But the National Association of Counties has endorsed this, sent a letter to Congress asking for support of this resolution as well, too. But I got, I can, I've got lots of data and stats I can give you, but I just want to bog everything down. But besides, if you're healthy, would you like me to read the resolution, or, Mr. Chairman?
Let me first, let me see. Commissioners, have any questions regarding this?
It's just amazing how big of an impact it does have on us. You know, as I look through the charts and the graphs there, it's amazing how much money actually flows through our county, calls the parks. So it's kind of an eye-opener for myself.
Well, you know, I serve on the TDA Board, Tourism Development Authority Board, and, you know, it's a huge draw for our area. And a lot of the focus for the tourism is, you know, tied to the Great Smoky Mountain National Park, Blue Ridge, and Blue Ridge Parkway. And, you know, the people that travel and come to this area just for that. And our Great Smoky Mountain National Park is the most visited national park in the country. So it is a huge, huge economic driver for our area.
Yep. So as Mr. Sor was saying, eleven point three million visitors here to the Great Smoky Mountain National Park in two thousand and sixteen. Two thousand and seventeen numbers are not ready just yet. So, you know, it is a big draw. Like I said, we're a unique county that has, you know, access to both parks.
Okay. I'll read it if you want me to.
Either way, Mr. Chairman, your call. I know you're a professional singer.
Whereas the Board of Commissioners encouraged Congress to create a reliable, predictable stream of resources to address deferred maintenance needs in America's national park system. And whereas America's national park system is a living testament to our citizens' valor, our nation's hardships, our victories, and our traditions as Americans, and it's been called America's best idea. And whereas the national park system preserves the diversity, culture, and heritage of all Americans, and serves as a living classroom for future generations. And whereas in two thousand and sixteen, the National Park Service celebrated its centennial and currently manages more than four hundred nationally significant sites and an invaluable collection of more than seventy-five thousand natural and cultural assets that span eighty-four million acres across all fifty states, the District of Columbia, and several U.S. territories and insular areas. And whereas North Carolina is home to ten national park units, including Cape Hatteras National Seashore, Moores Creek National Battlefield, Great Smoky Mountains National Park, and the Blue Ridge Parkway. And whereas Haywood County is a gateway to both the Blue Ridge Parkway and Great Smoky Mountains National Park, and benefits from the tourism associated with visitors to these parks and the improved quality of place for residents. And whereas the National Park Service's mission is to conserve the scenery and the natural and historic objects and the wildlife therein, and to provide for the enjoyment of the same in such manner and by such means as will leave them unimpaired for the enjoyment of future generations. And whereas in two thousand and sixteen, the national park system had more than three hundred and thirty-one million visits, including eleven point three million in Great Smoky Mountains National Park and fifteen point two million along the length of the Blue Ridge Parkway. And whereas in two thousand and sixteen, National Park Service estimates indicate that park visitors spent more than nine hundred and forty-two million in the local communities adjacent to Great Smoky Mountains National Park, and nine hundred and eighty million in those along the Blue Ridge Parkway. And whereas the National Park Service has the obligation to preserve our nation's history, promote access to national parks for all citizens, stimulate revenue to sustain itself in nearby communities, educate the public about America's natural, cultural, and historical resources, and provide safe facilities and environments to enjoy these resources. And whereas in two thousand and sixteen, the National Park Service estimated a deferred maintenance backlog of eleven point three billion, including sixty-seven million in the North Carolina portion of the Great Smoky Mountains National Park, and two hundred and sixty-one million along the North Carolina section of the Blue Ridge Parkway, which consists of repairs to aging historical structures, trails, sewers, thousands of miles of roads, bridges, tunnels, and other vital infrastructure. And whereas it is the responsibility of Congress to maintain America's national parks, to ensure our natural places and our history is preserved and documented for future generations, and for the adjacent communities that rely on the direct and indirect economic benefits generated by visits to national park sites. Now, therefore, upon motion duly made and seconded, it is resolved, I guess we need to make that motion, have a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Second. We've made a motion and seconded, it is resolved that the County of Haywood urges Congress to create a reliable, predictable stream of resources to address deferred maintenance needs in America's national park system, and to ensure that federal infrastructure initiatives include provisions to address park maintenance. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously?
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, David.
It's an important program. You mentioned, you know, about the economic development. If this goes through, North Carolina could benefit from five thousand new jobs, a hundred and ten thousand jobs nationwide, five thousand jobs here in just North Carolina alone, you know, helping with this. So I think it's a good program. I hope Congress will listen to this. I know that they've met with Congressman Meadows and Congressman McHenry of the eleventh and the tenth districts respectively, about how important this program is to our region as well, too. And I'll keep you updated about how it goes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we've got request, appointment of five members and one alternate to the Board of Equalization and Review. Judy Hickman, our tax assessor, is coming forward.
Good evening. During the January second board meeting, I requested the approval for advertisement seeking applications to serve as members for the two thousand and eighteen Board of Equalization Review. Upon approval, the advertisement was ran in the Enterprise Mountain Year Local Newspaper on January tenth, fifteenth, and twenty-sixth. There were eight applications that were submitted, and I am requesting approval for the appointment of five board members and one alternate.
All right. If you, someone got a sheet?
There are eight things on here, but two hundred and thirty-nine considerations to be part of that.
Okay. While Mr. Mashburn's picking those up, I will say that this was probably the best group of candidates, and I might have said that before, but it gets even better, the best group of candidates that we have had for the Board of E and R, if not for any board that we have had in the past even applied for. Very difficult, this is one of the most difficult things that we do, is decide on the particular boards and make decisions on who's going to serve on those boards when we have such qualified candidates that come forward. And we certainly appreciate that. We appreciate the folks that applied, and for this particular board, and also that apply for the other boards. And if there's anyone that does not get picked for this board that applied to be on this board, we hope that you would apply again for this one, and also any other board that the county has. Yeah, and anybody wants to make a comment, go ahead.
Judy, when do you anticipate the board to start?
The assessor reviews and value change letters will be mailed out the twenty-third, which will be this Friday. And so we will start accepting applications to the board on, just a second, I've got it on my calendar. Start taking applications on the twenty-sixth of March, and the last day that we will accept applications is April sixth.
So what was that again, March?
March twenty-sixth.
To April sixth? So only ten days?
Yeah. We generally just do a couple of weeks.
If someone wants to peel their value, they've got ten days to submit it.
Correct, to the Board of Equalization Review.
And where do they get that? Go ahead.
I was just, when will, when will the board start meeting?
The board will start meeting April.
Approximately, yeah.
The first date that they will meet, they'll come in on the second. But the first appointments that they'll hear will be April sixth.
And Judy, how does, just explain the entire process. If you're someone out there sitting there now, and you want to contest the value that the county has placed on your property, what's the first step that they need to take?
What they can do is they can come and get an application from our office on the fourth floor, in the revaluation office, or they are online. And once they submit the application, they can actually talk to the appraiser up until we start accepting applications to the Board of Equalization Review.
And because this is a mass appraisal, the, there's certain limitations on what the appraisers can do, the assessors can do. So it's important, if these people are, the citizens have concerns about their value, and they believe their value's lower, and it's a home, they need to bring pictures of that.
Yes, yes.
Pictures of the insides of their home.
Yes, as I say, pictures are worth a thousand words, so.
Right. It's very important to do that. It's very important when, if you come before the Board of Equalization Review, to bring evidence that your home is not worth the value that has been placed on that.
Correct. Yeah, if there's any, if there's any kind of damage or anything to the inside of the home, the appraiser cannot see. home, the appraiser cannot see the inside of the home. They can only see what's on the outside. So it is very important to bring in pictures if you have anything on the inside.
Commissioners, have any other questions to Judy?
Only other thing to add maybe is just for the citizens of the county, you don't even have to stop there from what I understand. If, if they still disagree, they can take that on to the state level. Is that right, Judy?
They can. They'll, they'll receive a letter from the Board of Equalization Review with their final decision. Once they receive that, if they wish to appeal further, they can take it to the Property Tax Commission in Raleigh.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have a tie for the fifth.
Go right up to that microphone. Nobody can hear, we can hear you, but they.
Okay. I'm sorry. We have a tie for the fifth seat. And so at this time, I'm going to hand out ballots again, and you will be voting between Elizabeth Culberth and Mary Ann Fisher Enlow. Elizabeth Culberth and Mary Ann Fisher Enlow.
Just to go back to Mr. Miller, just wanted to confirm, I don't know if this is for Mr. Francis or Mr. Mashburn, but all the requests that Mr. Miller's made, I understand that those requests have been given to him. Is that correct?
Sorry, sir.
Sorry. I know you was counting. I was just asking to go back to Mr. Miller's comments earlier. All the requests that he has made, he has gone answered, or he's got the information he's requested. I just wanted to confirm that, the records. Thank you.
We certainly have attempted. I will have to say there's been a couple of times that it's, because there's so much other that, that comes in with his request, that it's hard to pick out sometimes. And, and I've tried to do that and, and work with him, but to the best of my knowledge, other than the most recent request that we have received, those requests have been responded to. I don't think Mr. Miller feels that the response is, was adequate, but based on what I've been able to determine, all the records that we have pertaining to that, he has received. As, as was indicated earlier by Mr. Francis, there are some records that were requested that we don't have, such as a cover letter for the MOU. He was given a copy of the plans that he used in, in that project. And while I've got the floor just a minute, I'd like to say that the reason that I have been trying to expedite this and getting it through, coming through me is because the, our policy and the way I understand the state law is that the custodian of the records is the person who is in charge of that section. So if it's a question concerning finance, then it would be the finance director. If it's a question concerning HR, then it would be the HR director. In some instances, Mr. Miller has not wanted to go to the person who's actually in charge of those records, but to someone within that department. And that's not in accordance with the statutes as I understand it. So since that was the case, then I started to try to accumulate the records that he requested for and provide those to him. And another thing that the statutes say is that we only have to provide him access to the records. We have gone way beyond that and actually have made copies of the records and then scanned those into, and sent it by email to him where, and he has been able to avoid paying for the copies of the records that we had to run copies in order to be able to scan them, but yet he received it as a, an electronic communication and therefore didn't have to pay for the copies. That is contrary to the way I understand the statute been. He has every right to come in and inspect any record. If it's in an electronic form, then we can supply it to him and that. But if it's in a written form, we don't have to make it electronic and then send it to him, and he would have to pay for the copies. So it's, it's been, we have attempted to try to respond to his request. If we fail to do that, it's mainly because we haven't understood exactly what his request is.
David, I understand that you've got the copies of everything that we've supplied, Mr. Miller, as well.
The, it will be, Elizabeth Culberth will be the fifth member and the alternate will be Mary Ann, Mary Ann Fisher Enlow.
Do we need to confirm that, approve that? I'll entertain a motion that we approve the, let's see, we approve Evelyn Cooper, Elizabeth Culberth, James Harley Francis, Rayburn Cliff Stovall, and Jimmy Flynn as the five appointed members of the Board of Equalization, and Mary Ann Enlow as the first alternate. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Judy. All right. Anyone else have anything for open session? If not, we have closed session this evening. I move, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143, 318.11a, 3 Attorney Client Privilege.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. All right. We are back from closed session. Is there anything that we have for open session before we adjourn? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Say again.
Say again.
All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.